I call the meeting to order at 6:30. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes of June 23rd. I'll understand a motion.
I'll make a motion. It's up to the minutes of June 23rd.
Thank you Jasmine, thank you Joe for the second. Did anybody have any corrections? I didn't either, good job. All favor of it's up there. That is the one from.
From Caterina.
It's a short one, I'll read it real quick.
Yeah.
Dear Mrs Everett and the whole Linwood team, we are so grateful for the year our three boys had the opportunity to experience in a Linwood Elementary School. I'm not going to say their names, learned a ton of, learned a ton and really enjoyed their teachers, classmates, and everything about the school. Keeping the school open through the pandemic also had a great positive impact on our children's development, our work and our family life. We can't thank you enough. They're moving back to Sweden, they want to know if they need to do anything to unenroll them from Linwood. And hope to come back and visit, that was a nice letter.
Very nice.
Yeah. Okay, that was the only four speakers. Perfect. Business administrators report then.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to let everyone know, so this summer we're doing a Linwood summer lunch program like we did last summer. So, and we're running it through the school again. We're working on trying to do like a gut lunch, an official gut lunch program. But in the meantime, because there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with that. So we applied for a grant through New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. We got $10,000 this year, last year we got $5,000. And we did have a good conversation with them because it's really not sustainable. So that's why we're kind of looking at a different model for next year by creating an official gut lunch program. But in the meantime, for this year we got $10,000. Also applied for a grant through Price Chopper, about $350 in gift cards that we can use to purchase groceries, which was really nice, we got that. So it's running for 10 weeks. We have 13 families, 26 kids approximately. And we've had a lot of really good volunteer help. We have some people in the community, mainly from Rotary, we have people at the school, we have Sharon that's been helping, and Sheila and Meg have been helping a lot, call them our buyers because they always find some really good deals.
Fantastic.
And working with some of the local businesses, so.
Great.
It's nice that we're able to do that. And then just the regular end of year, getting ready for.
Sign the manifests.
Yeah, yeah. We're still, we still carry on business all summer.
Great. What was that?
Just someone coming.
Oh, gotcha. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to, in your packet there should be a list of trainings with board members. If anyone would like to do any trainings, they just have to let Sharon know. Right now their trainings are remote, so it makes it kind of convenient for any board members that they wanted to join in. If there is any fee for a workshop, some of the workshops do have a fee. If they have a fee, just call Sharon and she will process the workshop for you so that you would not be paying for that. And we did not have a policy committee this week as we are still waiting for the new policies, recommended policies to come in through the New Hampshire School Books Association. But as soon as they start coming in, that we will start the policy committee up again. And if we do not get any, so then we will revert back to our original packets that we were doing and go through the process. The strategic plan committee has met, they met on July 15th. And we had a virtual meet that was in person, we had a virtual meeting on July 20th. And I didn't know if Jasmine or Tammy wanted to say something about that.
So the July 15th and July 20th were the step in the process that we're in, which is gaining community input. So we have spread the word to business owners, taxpayers, second homeowners, staff, families, and trying to just let them know what the strategic planning committee is, let them know what we're doing and get some info on, to be a part of the process. We did not receive any feedback, I think people, some people answered the survey. Did we get more than six? Because we had six and then, okay, so we got, we got, some people answered the survey. But nobody came to the virtual event, nobody came to the face-to-face event. We're suspecting it's because it's summer, so we've talked to Mark Dolan who's in charge of the program. And we're going to push our end date back into October rather than August so that we can try again.
Yeah, it's hard to get people's, you know, head around the school in July.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Okay. Let's see, other, some of the other things we will be talking about within the agenda. But another one is the roof project is in process, materials have been delivered however they've, due to the weather. It hasn't been cooperating right now, but that, that will be done before the beginning of school, we don't have any problem with that. And Mark, I didn't know if you had anything else to say.
Well, the, it's, we got state approval on the tanks and now the final approval will be in the inside. And hopefully that'll be done by the end of next week. It'll be all done and out of our hair.
Fantastic.
Okay, the rest I can, I can review as we go through our agenda items.
Perfect. Principals, principals report.
Good evening. Just wanted to say that our custodians are here daily, doing a great job with cleaning, repairs, things of that sort, trying to keep up with the grass, especially with all the rain. So, you know, proud of the work that they're doing right now, so they're doing well. We had a three-day poly bath conference, which was based on, you know, tier one, two, and three behavioral needs and values for the school. It was put on by, well, we're the ones that put it on, but we had maybe about 16 people in attendance, both being physically here and a few people on the remote. And basically what we talked about is like, how do we do school? And what does school look like for Linwood and Linwood community and bringing up our core values? And, which will go really nicely with the strategic plan. So once we, once we kind of refine what those core values are, you know, and usually it's three to four of them. And once we refine what those are and the teachers, what we can do is we can start transferring that as to how we look at discipline. And we look at discipline in terms of using terminology like, you know, disrespect, disruptive, refusal, and safety violations of discipline. And so everything can kind of be thrown back to those types of things. And then, and then what that does is it brings constant reminders to kids what the rules are, what's expectations, where's the norms, where are the policies? And so there's no real bakery, you know, wordage and things like that. You just know that we're going to stick with those few things. And so we're really looking forward to working more with the rest of the community, meaning our teachers and students as to what that's going to look like. So I know that last time there was some concern about Spanish and French maybe not being in the middle school. We were able to remedy that. And so we're going to continue where with Spanish and French for the sixth, for the seventh and eighth grade. We never offered it to the sixth grade to begin with. So we did manage to be able to work that back into.
That's great, that's fantastic, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be here then, I think it, I think it makes everybody a little happier.
Fantastic, no, I'm glad that you were able to work that out.
Right, and, you know, we're still in the hiring process, right? There's a few positions that we have looking for. And we're working with Sean O'Brien through the ADAPT program. And he has brought in a young lady, I don't know if I want to say her name right now, because, okay. So she, we brought in a young lady who is going to be taking over the SAP duties. And we will have her three days a week. Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, she'll be with us from like nine to one. And then on Fridays, she'll be with us from nine to 5:30. And the reason it goes to 5:30 is because they'll be changing those activities for a while. Normally that is a middle school program that happens on Mondays. And they'll be changing that to Fridays. And that's kind of a joint venture with different, different communities and their schools, the middle schools as well.
Great.
So I'm really excited about that. She seems very energetic and willing to want to participate and I think it'll be a really good fit.
That's right.
And then the last thing is, we finished our summer school, we had five students in high school, it was a summer school, who were able to complete all the tasks that they needed to do. We have one middle school student with summer school, and I think they got about one more week to kind of tighten up a few things that we're going to ask for them. Other than that, you know, we're just trucking through summer. It's going fast.
No kidding, no kidding.
Yeah, so that's all we got.
Now, elementary is still.
Yeah.
Full swing summer.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Great. Thank you. Committee reports, did anybody, any committees meet?
We had no committee.
No committee, so we just have the second reading on the policies and that's it. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the policies of the second reading? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve policy DFA, EF-R, GBGA, GDB-R, JICA-R, JLCA, JLCB, JLCC, JLCF-R, and JLCG. Thank you Joe. Thank you Brian. Any other questions, comments, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Great, then they all pass unanimously. Thank you. Staff nominations, recommendations?
Yes, I have a recommendation for Jennifer Malagreta as a paraprofessional, starting in September.
Fantastic.
Ask the board to approve the recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion to recommend Jennifer Malagreta for a paraprofessional. I'll make a motion, thank you Jasmine. Thank you Joe. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Castleberry Fairs, did you all see?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I just have one more thing for the hall coaches. I just wanted to mention the hall coaches.
Thank you.
I have Varsity Girls.
I have that on here too.
Soccer coach is Tony Drappo. The Varsity Boys Soccer Coach is Blair Wheaton, and the assistant is Nate Jenkins. Middle School Boys Soccer is Adam Genati, and the assistant is Jim Martin. In cross-country, Varsity Coach, running coach is Sarah Bowden. We are still waiting on the Middle School Girls Soccer Coach. And all of the coaches that I did mention have already been in this position prior. So I just wanted to let you all know.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you for that. Okay, now, Castleberry Fairs. In your packet is the letter from Terry Mullen, you've all read it. Terry's here. Do you want to add anything to your, your letter?
I can answer any questions, we love to move our fair, we can't have it across the street. We love to move it on the field. We kept the fair smaller, we normally fit 120, but we kept it to 80. And we've been here since 1992, so we'd really love to keep it in town. All of our artisans, we're not all local, we all travel, we all rent condos and airbnb and hotel rooms, so we need to live and know if we're not coming. And I don't want to move the fair to Northwood Stock or Conway, which is the option we have.
Why is the reason you can't have it across the street?
Pardon me?
Why can't you do it across the street?
Well, when it probably happened, the restaurant moved out onto the green, and so we lost half the green.
Sure.
And some of the merchants and restaurants and shops have moved out into the paved area. And we just don't have the space for it, there's no longer any extra parking. So, I don't know if they're ever going to be going back in, and we'll move back over there. We'd really like to come over here, and people are excited about coming to on the grass. And the artisans want to stay in Lincoln. We're self-contained, we're very low-impact, we, we're promoters, we put together arts and craft festivals for a living, that's what we do. And this is a lovely place, everyone loves to come to Lincoln. And I think the people in Lincoln appreciate the fair. It's all jury, American-made arts and crafts. It's not a flea market, we don't have commercial products or winter free trip or window replacements, nothing like that. It's just strictly arts, crafts, food and music, and authors know. We wouldn't let anyone drive on the grass, we're mindful of the, any sprinkler system. We would find off-site parking for our exhibitors, like we normally do. And we would rent toilets and dumpsters, we hired local security and the police. We hired a police officer for pedestrian traffic and taking.
Is there a fee for it? Or is it?
We pay. I don't know what your facility use fees are, but we normally pay $500 for a setup day and $1,500 per show day.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, so for August it would be $3,500, and for October it would be $5,000, which is significant. We're just a small arts and craft event, but that's a big part of our budget. And now toilets, toilets have gone crazy in expense.
I bet.
What do we need to do? On that, on the subject.
Well, I know the custodial staff had some concerns.
Yes.
Especially with the, the fact that we've invested significant money in our fields over the past few years. And to have that amount of pedestrian traffic, pedestrian traffic on the front field was a concern for the, our staff.
We'll have the tents and all the sticking going to the ground and.
All we need to do is, you know, at this point we either make a motion to approve or deny the request.
I would say too, we don't have any really big tents, everyone is on a ten-by-ten, individual campy, they're all fire-rated. We stake it down with six, six-inch stakes, and they're dog-tied in. So we don't damage anything, and we don't hit any sort of systems, like I said, we're very mindful of that.
Yeah, that's true, they're all like the easy ups.
Yeah, the type tents, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I think, if we're ready to.
To?
I made a motion to approve the use of the field, but with Mark's team come up with like the best use, like so probably not the infield and stuff like that, as well as, as a result of the financial amount that, you know, the administration can work out. I think it could cover the costs that are necessary to repair.
If there was any damage.
To do some backs, patching, or to, you know, pay for a little bit of staff. But if they're picking up leasing and all that other stuff, I think it's always been a good draw for the community. Not that we need any more people these days in the community, but I think it's a, it's a good one. And I, and I, and I would be, so my motion is to, is to approve it, you know, with the different stipulation that we'll have to, you know, just come up with a good plan for.
Now you're approving both.
When school is over and the buses are gone, we have other places that are in towns or in town.
Soccer, whether it be on Friday or Saturday, I'm not sure, we're just checking right now to see if it's a game on Saturday. Okay.
Oh, we have games out front, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Middle school mostly, but yeah.
Oh, do they have them?
Do you have a average like daily attendance that you counter?
I really don't know here, because it's just open. But I know that over on that side we estimate like 700 people a day. But in October it's more, because it's just people walking through, they're not just visiting the crowd there. It's sort of like a speed bump from, from the highway to a tank. They stop and stretch their legs and use our toilets and get some telephones.
Do you have to, I mean, do we have to agree to vote dates now?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have to agree with anything. I mean, obviously we'd have, we'd have to give her an answer for the August one because they better promote it.
Well, I'd not agree, but like, you know, make a decision, do we have to make a decision on both of them?
On October, no.
No, but I don't want to, my only like concern with that is that if we didn't, we came up with an approval for August and we're not really sure about October, I don't knock you for having to look at other options. And then those other options could turn into a loss.
See, and I was thinking, I would like to, if, if we approve any of them, I'd like to approve one and see how it goes. And then after August 13th, decide on October, if that's.
I mean, if that would work for you, but I would have, I would say we'd have to put it on the strict timeline that we meet within a short period of time after that August time.
The next meeting after August 13th.
So that there's time.
Will they start practicing that week?
Right, so we do that, it's Columbus Day weekend. They have a game at Franklin, it says on the 7th.
That's Saturday?
No, that's, that'd be.
Thursday, October 7th, so there's nothing over that weekend?
Right. The next thing is the 12th, Pittsburgh-Kanem.
Exactly. In Pittsburgh or home?
That's home, that's Boys Varsity.
Oh, Boys Varsity, okay.
Yeah. Right, but it was so weird last year with all the whatever, let me see.
All right, well, we have a motion on the board to approve both craft fairs with the caveat that they wouldn't set up in October that Friday until after 4:00 p.m.
Correct.
Yep.
And also we don't have to have them Monday if you're worried about those being on the field and the very next day we need it. We'll just pass on, on the Columbus Day itself. If that's, if that's.
Right, we're off, it doesn't make any sense to, yeah.
Doesn't matter, okay.
Yeah, girls are home, Colbrook the 7th, but nothing over that weekend. I'm sure they still practice or whatnot, but.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm still hesitant, I, I am not going to be in favor of both of them.
I mean, that's hard, we're on the parking.
Right. The first one, I mean, gave it a shot once, but I wouldn't want to commit to both of them personally.
Do you have to advertise for both of them at the same time?
We already promoted these, these have been started.
Right.
Promotions already started, all we can do is change the location.
Right.
I see, okay.
Our advertising is running constantly, that's what we did, joy. But now it's hopefully you can change things.
Right.
And after last year, it almost, you know, ended us 23 cancellations.
Right, right.
Is there any concern, excuse me, sorry, about, like, I can't remember if you're correct or incorrect, but like, this being the start of renting space at the school for other events? Is there concern about that?
I, I mean, no, because it's, you don't set precedent for anything, it's, you can say yes to one, no to the other. Without any issues there, this won't set a precedent, no.
One of my concerns was that we used to rent them that weekend, either Deer Park or Alpine.
I don't know that schedule.
I don't either, and they're, they're a couple hundred people.
Right.
But they haven't applied yet, so.
Any other discussion?
So it's on my motion, we'll vote and then we can go from there.
So Brian's.
Well, it has to be second anyway.
It was, Joe seconded it.
Thanks, buddy.
The motion with a second was to approve both craft fairs, August 13th, 14th, and 15th, and October 9th, 10th, 11th, and?
No.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, 8, 9, 10, 11. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So the motion's defeated, because there's.
So why is it nay? Can we ask why?
I'm sorry.
Is it the way we can just approve the August one?
Well, no, that only defeats my motion, yeah.
That defeats his vote.
Yeah, I'm the only one that takes the hit. I feel like there's still, there's still a lot of opposition.
Any more discussion? So the motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the August craft fair, the August dates, and then for us to have a quick turnaround to say whether or not we would approve the October.
Wouldn't that be contingent?
We need a second.
Second.
Second, Joe, thank you very much. Okay, go ahead, contingent on what?
A contingent on a site plan, site plan applicable to the school or custodial staff.
Right, so what'd you say Brian, because that sounded good.
Oh my, don't ask him again, that was so.
Well, I, I mean, it's just the basics, like, when we grow it up like this, you know, like, you know, we're not using the infield because that's the most like, you know, so it'd probably be, you know, basketball court, upper field, below the hill.
I, I can say, from having the craft fair in town and the town issuing the, the permits and whatnot for somebody who's, Terry's very easy to work with.
You know?
And, and if you say, don't go here, they don't go there.
Yeah, they just mark off those particular areas, and then I think the financial part of it, it would help us out with the additional cost to like Mark's team. And who knows, I mean, there's, there's a couple dollars in there to maybe put towards something, and maybe we decide down the road that that goes towards things that have to do with the fields. You know, like it's just, that's just a key. But yeah, so we'll just have to write up the locations and layout, and you know, she'll have the number of vendors.
We have to just, we're in charge of whose space to local nonprofits that don't sell anything but the PTA could do. We don't, we don't.
Yeah.
Cookies, bake sales, book sales, we're a community event, we're open for that.
That's a wrap, I'm on it.
I agree with the, with the motion, I think that we just need to put a hard time on our backside of it. Whether.
Well, we need the very next Wednesday is our next, next meeting.
You know, it's, it would, you know, be reviewed, Mark gives his input, Mark will just act if they're input, and then we can have an answer in seven days on the approval.
I also have to, I have to go fill out a permit application by the board select me to, so timing is really.
Right. Right, right.
There is a form that we have here, building use form.
Yeah.
You can email that.
Oh, you'll know, you'll know in a couple minutes.
Okay, if, if this passes, you can email that?
Yeah, that would be easier.
So if somebody's seconded my motion?
So Jasmine's motion was to approve the August 13th, 14th, and 15th craft fair. Joe seconded that motion, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? We have one day, so it passes with opposition. And then, Terry, we meet the following Wednesday after that. So we can discuss October at that point.
All right, great, so everything goes through in August, we should be fine by October. We're good, we're good to go. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Nice to come back, because I had to come up here from the.
Five hours.
Yeah. Deb will email you.
All right.
The, the building use.
The building use.
All right, I'll fill that out.
Yeah.
And I'll send you the certificate of insurance, everything will be all.
Yeah, that's part of the process, right.
Are we excused?
Yes. Yes, you're excused, thanks so much.
You can go.
Thank you for coming again.
Stay or go.
Thank you.
Moving on, so I can get to dinner.
I can hear you tapping.
Okay, we have the audit questionnaire up next. We have the answers from last year's, which I will also read if we need to. Most of them are simple, yes or no. I'm sure you all read this thoroughly in your packets. Yeah. Do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity? I'm going to check, no, does anybody want me to check, yes. Have you received any communication from employees, former employees, regulators, or others alleging fraud?
No.
Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow?
Yes.
Yes, and I, I noticed that was attached to the last one. If yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity?
No.
It does not. Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July 1, 2020, to which the school district or SAU or any retirement, savings, pension, or other similar plan was or is to be a party? Holy cow.
Legal ease.
Yeah, exactly. Sale, purchase, purchase, exchange, or leasing of property? Anyone?
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities? Anyone? Transfer, or transfer or receipt of income or assets? Now, that does not include the segments we get for yearly, no. Maintenance of bank balances as compensating balances for the benefit of another?
No.
Any other transactions? Yeah, let's try. And just as we answered this, oh, exactly the same as last year, I think. That's if yes, but it was a no. Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds?
Yes.
Yes. If the answer is no. All right. Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity. Last year, we said the superintendent, my gosh, Matthew. The superintendent updates the board at meetings, membership in the NSBA provides legal updates. Stick with that? Okay. I'm not writing out one yet. Does the board review? What do you do on this one? Does the board review comparative reports of estimates in actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes.
Weekly manifest and quarterly reports?
Yes.
What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of this process? Also, does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports? Uh, we put through annual budget sessions and reports, meet with department heads during budget workshops. Sound good? Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT function?
Yes.
Is there a written investment policy adopted? Yes, and this date would be the same?
We've just, we just reapproved it.
Okay, so I'll wait and get that date then. Number 11, have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees?
Yep.
Yes, and provide a copy of the policy covering the same, which we will. 12, does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
The student activities fund, um, and the trust funds. Um, the student activities fund is in the custody of the principal, the trust funds are the trustee of the trust funds of the town of Woodstock. So. That was a yes. Trick question. Has the board approved a fund balance policy in compliance with GASP number 54? Yet, no. Provide the most updated copy. Last page, Joe.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, there's an extra one. Oh. Does the school district or SAU have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? If so, please indicate what they are, on what website they are maintained, and who is responsible for them. Everybody have any knowledge?
No.
Not gonna explain it. Since the World Health Organization's declaration of the worldwide pandemic due to the coronavirus COVID-19, how has the board adapted to the following approving vendor and payroll manifests? We continue to go into the SAU, maintain the same process with masks.
SAU.
And social distancing.
Yeah.
So.
Was it locked before the pandemic?
We, I'm gonna write that, so maintained. Existing. Procedure.
It's the same question.
The masks. And social distancing. Reviewing the budget and actual reports.
Same.
Same. Making financial decisions, i.e. approving contracts, leases, accepting unanticipated gifts, grants, donations, here at conferences, et cetera. We can add Zoom conference to that.
Remote, yeah.
And then we'll get this typed up all pretty.
Thank you.
And then on that side. Perfect. Thank you all. Student handbook. Did you all, obviously those aren't printed and put in your packets, did everybody get to read them online?
Yes.
Got that, everything online. Did anybody have any corrections, suggestions, other than the formatting?
I was gonna question, so the new, is, is what's in the handbook, the updated middle school, high school schedule with, with music put back in, or with the second.
I would check in.
Sorry.
Nope, sorry.
I was just looking for something else. Won't say that again.
The handbook that was sent to us as the, um, like final draft, does that reflect the new middle school, high school schedules with language put back in?
It reflects the, the schedule in the sense that when they move on the bell.
Yeah.
It shouldn't necessarily reflect this, the cycle of, um, subjects.
Sure. And I noticed there is not an elementary school schedule in it. Is that common?
Yes, typically it's like, it's more or less the beginning of the day.
Yeah.
And the end of the day. Those schedules are kind of various.
That was it for my question.
Anyone else have any other questions, comments? Um, I will accept. Yeah, go ahead.
I was reading through the section on, I guess, uh, page 70, but it was on, um, I think objectionable material being taught in school. And one of the, there was a note in there about giving two weeks' notice to parents in the event of, uh, this subject matter coming into school. And it's being posted on social media.
The subject matter is, and that would be up to the discretion of the administration. Obviously, if it's something, um, you know, very, um, personal, that would be put on that. Go ahead, yeah.
So typically what happens in, in fifth grade is when we do sex education, and sometimes parents opt out of that. And so if we're doing sex education, those beginning efforts, you have to mail something out, you know, two weeks at a time.
Sure.
You have to, so it gives them an opportunity to opt out. I don't recall that we've ever done that on, on Facebook, and I hope not. I wouldn't have done it that way.
The Facebook thing would cover, like, when we do the big crash simulations in the front field, where the drunk driver, things that have been done. That's the type of thing we probably put on Facebook so the community knows it's not really a flipped over car in front field.
Sure.
So, um, but yeah, good, good catch. Good for you. Um, anyone else? I will accept a motion.
I said a couple, like, there's like hyphenation changes and stuff. I don't know. We should go through, I don't want to go through that, like, on my, on here, I can just.
Okay.
Because we still have a few that were, were, you know, with formatting, and then anything else is just.
There is on. These are all my formatting changes that still need to be made, so maybe something that I've already. We should. Because the time we're getting together, there's definitely time. So what I'll do is entertain a motion to approve the student parent handbook, pending the formatting and some grammatical changes, but no, no content changes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jasmine. Got it, thank you, Ashley.
I just tried to move it.
That's fine, that's fine.
Jasmine's hungry.
She's getting angry over there. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain, thank you for that. You went over the fall coaches?
I did have the fall.
Did you have anything else for new business or future identity?
I just have one thing, uh, new businesses, uh, as a health teacher, uh, concern that came up, and we do have a part-time health teacher, we had a position. We had a part-time position last year for health as well. And, um, what we're doing this, this coming year is we, the, the current, um, health teacher that we did have, she resigned. And now we have, and it was the same person, it was the adapt person, and she did part-time health. So now we have another, um, situation where we have an adapt person, but that adapt person is not able to teach health. So, um, what we typically do is we look at our, our current staffing. And if there are openings within the staffing of those who are certified in that area, then, um, we have them, um, to, do the, um, the teaching of the subjects. So for example, we have an elementary that will be able to, um, move forward with the elementary health, uh, program, integrating up with the, uh, social emotional piece that is already in place. And the integration works out smoothly, um, with that.
And that'll meet standards? That'll meet the standards?
At least the state standards, yes, the state standards we have to follow. Um, also middle school as well as a certified, um, health teacher in our building, and, um, that is one class or a few classes a week. And the same with the high school. What we are doing with the staff is, as, as changes are made, and as, and as staff move forward, they're starting to take on another certification. So that every subject that, that the staff teaches, they have to be certified in that area and, and carry so many credits in that area in order to be able to teach. So that particular subject. So what we're doing is, is you, you will start seeing a lot of, um, teachers who are certified in math and science. And, or social studies and English, you know, so, so any of these subject areas were, were starting to double up because as, as the numbers go down. You know, we want to be able to, you know, we'll have to be able to combine classes and whatnot, so just looking, you know, for the future for that. So, and, and this is one of the steps that you're seeing happening, and, and it's challenging because, you know, some years you may have a lot of students, you know. But right now, we're, we're, um, we're, we're at a certain number of subjects, and with a planning period every day. So i- if that can be, that has to be followed, and that is being followed. So, so if we have, for example, of, of, uh, classes that are the same, let's say you have two, I don't know, fourth grade classroom. And your, your classes are small enough so that you can combine the classes and all, and, and instead of teaching two separate fourth grade classes, you could teach one. Then that, that takes, frees up a subject area, time period for somebody, so then that person would be able to teach, you know, a subject that we can only, they can only teach.
So their schedules did accommodate it.
Yes.
Yeah.
According to the CBA, yes.
Thank you for that, and finding the efficiencies in it and not having to hire another person. I mean, you hear out there, especially during the last couple budget seasons, about, um, sustaining our, and going easy on taxpayers, and I'm trying to think of what else was said, that, that's, um, thank you for that. It's hopefully, um, our taxpayers will see that we're mindful of it and we're listening. So, yes, thank you for that.
Certainly mindful, and it is great to be able to be resourceful. I also think that health is an incredibly important, absolute subject that needs its due diligence, that needs, you know, not a ta, already taxed teacher providing that, um, education and teaching that course, because it's hugely important from kindergarten through 12th grade.
Absolutely.
Continuing business. Um, right now for the town of Lincoln, the Denise Harrodine Pleasant Street Eastment, uh, the drawings are in process at this, at this time, and all communication has moved forward to the.
Perfect.
A question on that. Is that costing the taxpayers any money for our attorney to do all this stuff? And we haven't even approved her, this thing happening, but we have to pay for it anyway. Okay.
Yeah. Welcome to municipal government here. Yeah, exactly. Superintendent's evaluation, we discussed that already sort of, Brian. The rest of the, um, board that hasn't filled it out yet will do so, right, Brian? Okay. COVID-19?
COVID-19, we're just reviewing the guidance, and, uh, the recommendation at this time is to wait until August.
Yes. Hurry up and late, yeah.
Last minute.
Strategic plan, we kind of went over that, that was already. Um, ESSER funds.
Yeah, um, we continue to work on that, um, you know, a lot of the ESSER funds is getting input from different groups. Part of the ESSER funds, 20% of our funds, we have about $700,000, have to be addressed through learning loss. So some of the things we're looking at, I, one of the positions that we was approved at the last.
Yeah.
That will go into the grant, the, the guided study hall student support position that was approved. I mean, some other things we've been discussing, and again, all of this, we have to have these discussions, we need to present it to the state, even though we have the money, we still have to get it approved.
Right.
I've heard stories from other districts moving forward, and they, something doesn't get approved, so it's time consuming. But, um, but we've just been gathering data, one of the areas they're looking at in the middle school is the, the science programs, so looking at some, um, new science program. Possibly looking at some after-school programs, when school starts up again in the fall. Other social, emotional learning supports, like increasing some of the BCBA days next year. So those are some of the things we're looking at for learning loss, but the biggest piece we're looking at is, is any construction-type projects. We had a meeting with Wayne Fillion the other day to address the high school HVAC system and, and the airflow and all, and all that. You can help, Mark can help me there, but the first step with that is getting a proposal from, from Wayne to give us a, a plan. And, and, and address the areas there, and, and they're, they've been working on other projects with the state. So we know what's acceptable. There's like four additional forms we need to fill out to present to the state before we can move forward and get that approved. So we're working on that, but we, we did meet with Wayne. It's time to replace the boilerplate, it's not related to COVID, and, and Wayne knows that, and they've been, again, working with other schools. But, so he'll be giving us a proposal for moving forward.
Fantastic. So, good. Good, good, good. And you all got, we saw the 2019 postgraduate surveys at the last meeting, but the 2021 senior exit surveys came in, and I love that you put them both together, so kind of compare a little bit. I didn't print it, it was not printer friendly.
Right, right, it's those two, and, and they have the, you know, like I said. So, um, you have a 2021, that's your current, uh, senior, uh, class, and then in two years, that particular class will, will get on, as well as every, every year we get these. So we, and we send them on, just look up them.
Now, I know I went through it online, and nothing's jumped out at me, did anybody else have any other comments or questions or nothing? Thank you for including that in the packet that was.
What is the process for taking that survey? How do they get it, or is it in the class, or?
Um, they, they do have the, uh, different procedures that they try, so for example, the ones that have already, um, graduated, they, I, I believe they sometimes, they will call them, or they will, uh, email it. And depending on, um, how many responses they get, if they contacted people, and even, uh, records, if they got in touch with them, if they couldn't get in touch with them, how they tried, you know, different options that are out there.
And they try them more than once, I know this from, two out of my three kids responded to it, one didn't, and the one that didn't was contacted, I think, three different times, in three different ways. So, to. To do the survey.
There's concerted effort, too.
And he still didn't do it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Soccer kick wall.
Uh, that was, that was a request in previous meetings.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to approve the soccer kick wall, pending no discussion. I'd love to hear the discussion, but I think it's a great idea. Our community has always been big into soccer. The two parents that want to do it, they're definitely. Comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need to approve it, though, we have to approve a number. We can't approve, like, up to a number, because there is no solid pricing right now due to.
One.
Value values and stuff.
Right.
So his current estimate is at $2,035, I think if you worded it as approved, up to $2,100.
It's at the $2,200, that'll give him a little.
That we can.
You can, you know, nuts, bolts, screws that he may need that aren't in here, because I didn't, all I see is lumber.
And then, along as the, if the locations and stuff are negotiated with Mark and, Mark.
Jasmine, would you like to amend your motion to approve it up to $2,200?
To approve up to $2,100.
$2,200.
$2,200.
Thank you.
The approval from the marks, uh, where and when, et cetera. And thank you to those, those.
Yes, folks. Yeah, I agree. Joe's gonna second that amended motion. This money will come out of the facilities trust, I'm assuming?
No, at this point, if we wanted to, we have to have a separate hearing. I would say we just take it out of the budget at this point.
We take it out of the $3,500 coming in August.
There you go.
That's true, too, see?
It all goes into the, look, I have top of trucks, we'll bring you one.
She did.
Oh, perfect, good. Okay, we have a motion and a second up to $2,200 to move forward with this soccer kick wall. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Awesome. So you will let Adam know that that.
Yeah. What locations did you have, just in general? Was it gonna be in the back?
It's gonna be double sided, yeah.
Well, it really depends on whether they're gonna do two sides and whatnot.
Oh, definitely.
It could, it can go off lines, you know, if it's, if they do it in a good case, or maybe in the backfield by where the old softball backstop is, and then far corner.
Oh, that's not a bad idea.
The one that you, you have a regular school, is that two-sided?
Yes, it's right by the pool, it's right next to the indoor pool, yeah. You'd be surprised, I mean, kids, we can't, they're, they're, they're able to see, and not way out in the corner.
You don't want to go there practicing.
Close to the building, that's true. Yeah, I don't know, but yeah, that's a tough one.
Let the marks decide.
Yeah, let the marks decide. They'll, they'll.
I don't, I don't know the people that are building this, are they coaches or?
Oh, yeah.
Soccer parents up there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They know what's best.
I'm excited we're gonna get one, it's, there's no perfect placement, it's gonna be great wherever it is.
Exactly.
Yeah. We won't recognize no students, no staff, other than Mark, get anything else to add for us today?
The only thing that I have to add is I'm concerned about, and I mean, it's, I know it's gonna work fine and whatnot, but I don't want to get into doing fairs all summer long and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I totally agree.
I think it's really the. Worried about the field and the damage to the field, but, you know, even then, it is what it is.
How, when, when the Friends of Mac does their yard sale, how, how tough is that on the field?
It's very tough, especially if someone drives a vehicle on it. It's very tough, especially if someone drives a vehicle on it, please rush, it takes a long time.
Or dump apple cider, stuff like that on it, burn it to a crisp.
But that's also towards the end of the year, so it kind of has the summer to recruit.
You know, and it'll be fine, less rains, and then it'll destroy it.
Yep.
I would like, I would like to add, if I could, that there's already a put-in building use form for softball, fall baseball, to use that field. And there's potentially August 10th, or October 10th, I should say, would be a date for a game. Could you probably work on changing it?
Yeah.
Probably, but just so you know, I don't know if that's going to be a factor, but.
Seems like the October one is much more attended.
Absolutely.
Bigger, longer, more attended.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, would, does that, I guess I'm confused. Is it going to be, they want the front field? Oh, so then it won't affect the baseball.
Okay. The only hard thing is parking. Yeah. And, and hopefully after that August craft fair, we will have maybe dates for the homeowners' meetings that they have, because that's going to affect parking. And you remind us of that, that, that baseball game as well, because even though it won't affect the field, it will affect parking. So, yeah. Joe?
I just, number one, want to introduce myself to you, because I don't know you. I want to welcome you to the board. I don't know you.
Thank you.
And welcome to the board. I'm Joe Lawson, by the way. I know we've never met personally. Oh, I guess, on top of that, since he is here, Matt was on facilities, which leaves just me and Joe. If you'd like to get on, there's two boards.
Committees.
Committees. Just that are, there's a hundred of them. But there's two that meet monthly, like regularly, and one is facilities and one is policy. Policy has been very well handled by Jasmine and Tammy, I think, and who's on it now? So you got quoted. You were. If you'd like to, it's only the second meeting of the month, and then we come sometimes an hour earlier, sometimes half hour earlier. But another person would be kind of nice.
What other committees was Matt on? Do we know?
He was an alternate on the nomination.
You can come check it out.
And he was on the sick bank committee, and that's it.
Yes, she is, but he was not on the, on the pair of.
Yes.
That one, yeah. And Matt was also on the sick bank committee?
Sick bank.
How often do they meet? It's an as needed, and I think it's more, if someone's going to, like, donate some of their sick days, it's going to be.
That's what I'm guessing.
All of the committees are facilities, which Matt was on. Policy, transportation, teacher negotiations, support staff negotiations, budget representative, which is not applicable now, the NHSBA representative, which I take one for the team, professional development, technology, risk management, Linwood Coalition for Health Communities, food service, sick bank, wellness, emergency management, strategic plan. So Matt had sick bank and facilities, and he was an alternate on support staff negotiations. Would you like to take those on? The, the big one is facilities.
Yeah. I have to do some process, because I, I do that, and I.
So do I.
Having three people is that sometimes, like, when you can't make it, I've been to the meeting with one person, and he, I can't say to myself what I believe is a good idea.
Right. Actually.
So it's nice to have, like, at least three people on that group, so that if we're all there, that's great, and if you're not, there's still going to be a decision made and presented.
So one meeting a month?
I will be in a physical.
Right, typically, right. You come an hour early to the meeting.
The first meeting in a month. Come, Mark, come around.
Yeah. Great, we'll put you in there. And then the alternate on the support staff negotiations, that's Jasmine and I. So that would only be if one of us couldn't show up to something. Have our back.
Sure.
I love it.
And then, sick bank is an as needed, they don't meet very often.
Maybe once a year.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Fly away. See what happens when I introduce you.
Well, I just want to say, you know, thank you. I'm excited to be on the board here, and, yeah, I think you've got a great community, and we look forward to work.
Excellent. And I'd like to say thank you for stepping up.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everyone.